October 15th, 2024. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
And Mr. Waters previously informed staff that he would be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next agenda item number four is Councilmember Board Reports and Acceptance of Meeting Minutes. We have one set of minutes from October 1st, the City Council meeting from October 1st of 2024. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Or corrections? Okay, seeing none, I will accept those minutes into our record. Next, we have the Joint Rock Lake Committee Monthly Report, and I see Wendy Catalani-Davies is here. Come on up, Wendy.
Moving right along, huh? Good evening. Not a lot has happened, but I wanted to show up and update you to this point. Our priority continues to focus on Wake Enhanced Technology. We also continue to provide educational articles for the Lake Mills leader. We're currently working on articles about permeable surfaces and another on lake setbacks. They aren't finalized yet, but we're working on those. The clean boats, clean water tools for the town are picked up this week and delivered back to the town hall. They'll be delivered back to the town hall after the election. We have a draft of the Wake Enhanced Technology research items filled out as we had an outline to follow. This week's meeting, which was last week's meeting, excuse me, ended up having to be canceled because we didn't have a quorum for various reasons, family emergencies, and personal reasons. So that meeting has been rescheduled for the 22nd, which was supposed to be a public information session where we were going to invite the public to come and give us information that they were concerned about or information they wanted to give us about Wake Enhanced Technology. We're now going to have that be our regular meeting, and we will then try and move out about that so that we still want the public to give them, give us their feedback. We have just, we discussed at our last meeting about having a facilitator for the public information session and decided against it, as we wanted it to be a little bit more informal. And so we have drafted some ground rules, which we will vote on in our next meeting, and they include up to the point if the meeting gets a little bit out of control, we'll just close the meeting down. Because it isn't, it isn't a formal meeting, it isn't a forum. So if it gets out of control, like it could, I don't think it will, but it could. We'll just shut the meeting down and we'll close it out. Again, I don't think that's what's going to happen. Again, we're meeting on the 22nd for our regular meeting, and our goal was to present our recommendation to the Town Board at their November meeting. And again, we will re-discuss that at our October 22nd meeting. That may or may not happen because of our kind of pushed out, because we had to cancel our last meeting or push our last meeting out. Other issues that are on our radar are, again, the Sandy Beach redevelopment concerns and how it might affect the lake, culverts and water runoff issues, Majala Channel redrudging, and getting the permit for the dredging, not renewed, but I guess renewed. Or we continue to participate in the Rock Lake Improvement Association Wake Enhanced Technology. They're very helpful with their research to enhance our research. And as we find out how your referendum for the Sandy Beach information comes through after the election, we'll see where we need to participate with that. And I would ask if you have any input about, from your constituents about the Wake Enhanced Technology issues, please forward it to us, or if you have, want to give us any now, please do. I know that the town is in charge of the lake, but we still would like feedback from anything you might have to say to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendy. A couple of the items that you said you were working on articles for, I wanted to welcome you to work with our zoning administrator if you have any questions on the setbacks, zonings, you know, those kinds of things. Troy can answer any questions or, you know, make sure you've got the information that you need.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for Wendy tonight? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is correspondence. Mary, what kind of correspondence did you have since the last meeting?
Since last meeting, I received three members, some of which I think you also received regarding the Century Building, and also an interest in a playground at Commons Park.
Okay. Michelle?
I had an old-fashioned letter as correspondence. That was really neat, as well as some emails regarding the Century Building. But yeah, that was pretty much it.
Okay. Steve?
Mine was basically the same, just the Century communication.
And I also received a number of pieces of correspondence on the Century site, including a letter in the mail, some correspondence on the Sandy Beach restaurant proposal, one comment regarding the potential multifamily housing development across from Tyronina Park on County Highway B, and a request to meet to talk about some possible ordinance changes related to the Knickerbocker Festival. So I imagine we'll hear more about that down the road. Okay, and as far as future correspondence and input, I would just like to share that Michelle and I are hosting another joint listening session. We've been enjoying doing this the last year or so. We are having a listening session on Thursday, October 24th, so next week, Thursday. And that'll be at 6:00 PM in the library, right in the entry level of the LD Fargo Library. So please stop by and share any thoughts or concerns that you have as city residents. Okay, our next agenda item is Questions and Public Comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet that is provided at the podium. If there's anyone online that would like to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature so that the clerk can identify you. So is there anyone in the room that would like to speak during public comment tonight?
Do we make any comments now if you're on the agenda?
Yes, any for items that are on the agenda, we would ask you to make your comments now. If you are the lead for an item, which Nikki, I believe you are, you can make a presentation during that item. But if there are other members of the public that want to speak on anything, they're welcome to come up at this time.
I don't know where the sign-in sheet is. Oh, here it is.
Oh, is it there?
It's buried underneath something.
Okay.
I will fill it up.
There should be a button to turn the mic on as well. Just make sure that there's a green light so we can hear you.
Thank you. Am I on the?
I don't think so.
I don't think the mic is on.
The green light is on now.
Yes, that's better. Great.
And so if I don't bug it, it's on. Good evening. My name is Julianne Smith, and I live at 204 Crestview Lane. And I have been homeschooling my child since COVID, when they shut the schools down. I'm asking that you would waive the fees for our homeschooling group to be able to use the community center downstairs at no extra charge. It is really helpful to be able to gather, to learn regardless of the weather, as today was a little flavor of Wisconsin winter. Gathering at parks is really wonderful in the summer, not so great in the winter. So having a space that is warm and dry where we can gather and learn together is a real gift to our community. And other cities, interestingly, the libraries have welcomed us at no charge with multiple uses. Fort, Watertown, and Johnson Creek, Johnson Creek was willing to let us use the space before they opened to the public. But there's a real value in being able to meet in our hometown in the beautiful space that we pay our taxes for. So we are requesting a waiver of fees for our homeschool group to meet in the space, in the community center, whenever it's available. We, I know Nikki polled the calendar. It's not very frequently used during the school day, and we would love to be able to utilize that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julianne. So anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Martenson, and I have been, and I live at N5566 Harvey Road, just outside of Lake Mills. I've been homeschooling for over four years now, and I have really enjoyed meeting with my homeschool group known as Fly. We've met at various locations at no cost, but prefer having a consistent place to meet. And what better place to gather with my homeschool community than our own hometown community center? I'm asking the council to approve a waiver of fees for my Fly homeschool group so we can continue to use the community center at least twice a month at no cost, as it was under the former policy. This will allow us to continue to grow and learn together and become members that this community can be proud of. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
So my name is Patrick Smith, and I live at 204 Crestview Lane. I have been homeschooled with my mom, well, my mom teaches me, ever since COVID. We pay taxes for this place, and it, I would like to be able to use it with a waiver of fees more to learn and play with my friends. And we will have to pay, if we don't get the waiver, every year at least $1,440 plus the $200 application fee. So I would love it if we could use this place for free in the swarm place instead of the cold Wisconsin weather. To, to free so that we won't have to pay the $180 many times every year.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Oh, yep, got another one.
Hello, my name is Sammy Ingraham, and I live at 207 Crestview Lane. I am 13 years old, and I am a part of the Fly homeschool community. I just request that you approve the waiver for us to meet more frequently at no cost at City Hall. We like meeting here and can continue to meet together while it is affordable to us. Thank you for serving our, our community.
Thank you, Sammy. Got some great public speakers here in our community. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council tonight? Might be one coming? Okay. I don't see anyone online. Misty, is there anyone who put anything into the chat to speak from online?
Nobody's registered online.
Okay. All right, if there's no one else who would like to speak, we'll close the public comment period tonight. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is our City Manager's Report. Drake?
There's a number of documents included in your packet. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If there's anything specific, please let me know.
Okay, so we have our usual monthly financial reports and check registers, our police department report, and our ambulance monthly report. Does anyone have any questions or comments on these reports? Okay, and I think we're ready to move on to council business. Thank you. So Agenda Item Nine, Letter A, is an update on the LD Fargo Library Project. And I see our library director, Gerard Taylor, is here to speak. Good evening, Chad.
Yes, so an update. All the homeschoolers, you know about the science kits we have, right, at the library? Oh, okay. Ask at the desk. We have little take-home science kits. So an update, I came last time, and kind of recap, we had split our, the project into two phases for costs, and we'd applied for the FFP grant, which was declined. We found out that last Monday. And that same night, two of the fundraising groups met and put us in a bit of a bind. We have to decide the next steps we're going to go forward and how we're going to budget it out. But the FFP grant was declined, and pretty much, I put my notes together, but I didn't put them together very well. Give me a second. So everything depends on the project budget. And the original, or the latest $6.5 million budget just isn't going to work out for us. We don't quite have the fundraising capacity to do all that, even if the city were to put together even more, like $2 million. We'd have to make up $4.5 million. And since that's no longer manageable, we're kind of going, not back to the drawing board, but kind of looking and scaling back the operation to a more reasonable price point that we can reach. And the fundraising capacity that we're looking at is, at the top end within the community, is $2 million. That's still being discussed by the planning committee, which is going to meet in December. And we still have plans to present a proposal and a request to the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation. That proposal is going to be altered depending on what kind of plan we come up with. So we're, we're kind of setting aside the two-phase plan with an addition, and right now, we're looking at, to keep it manageable, is just to raise a second story on the existing first story. And I spoke to FEH Architects about that last week and today, and he's putting together a proposal for a two-story addition. And preliminary budget he has come up with so far is the two-story addition widening the walls a little bit. And if bid next year in 2025, it'd be $3.848 million, and if bid in 2026, it'd be $4.28. And he has not sent anything over yet. He's going to have that ready for the library board meeting next Monday. But to, to break it down, and he could shave off different cost areas depending on the category. There's some things that he spoke about that could be kind of knocked down a bit. But if we're able to raise $1 to $2 million in the capital campaign, and the city is able to pledge, say, 50%, $1 to $2 million, and then we had another $500 from private grant source, I mean, we'd be in reach. Just, the problem is that we have to scale the operation down a little bit. Like I said, he hasn't sent anything over or quoted any numbers on square footage, but I imagine it'll be quite a bit less square footage. And that's pretty much it. I just want to give the board a regular update. The grant was declined, which means the $1.7 million that the city pledged goes away with it. So what we're doing now is putting together a budget goal that the architects could design to and that we can fundraise for. And then later back, later on, we'll be coming back to the city to make a request on capital. Drake, did I miss anything?
I don't believe so, and I think in the coming months, as the library formulates their plan, there'll be additional conversations with the city council as far as kind of a budget plan, potential, what the city council, what level of support the city council may look like, and what that looks like for what the project would do going forward. And speaking with Gerard, obviously, 2025 is not going to happen because you got to get fundraising off the ground, and they have to do some more, some new design work. So I think we can expect some additional conversations on this, but the library board's taking the opportunity to see what they can do to make it a more feasible project without any outside funding coming in beyond the capital campaign, potential foundation funding, and then the potential city support, and what that looks like for the library going forward.
Yeah, this would still focus on the current and future needs that we have, mainly getting the children's area more space and also having more private meeting space as well. I kind of put those two together as the top two.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Gerard? I had one, maybe more than one, but one that pops in my head is, I'm wondering if the library board had or your fundraising consultant have developed any kind of marketing materials or, you know, talking points yet about the, I mean, I see general things about, you know, the, what the need is and things like that, but is there anything more, more polished that will be starting to come out that then can be shared in the community so people can learn more about it? Or is that part of the capital campaign efforts?
Yes, it'll be part of the capital campaign, and we put together a planning committee that originally was projected to meet over like the next two or three months. It might get pushed back depending on what happened. But part of the planning committee is to, well, part of it is just to sell the project. And that would be having more polished material, floor plans, reasoning examples, all the selling points that we have. And the Jody Sweeney, who we're working with as fundraising, already has a few of those things put together just based off the many interviews she did almost about this time last year about needs. And so we'll be able to put all that together and then also plan the fundraising campaign for who to ask and how to ask and all those things, and also partly, hopefully partnering with the local community foundation as well.
Thank you, and I did think of one other question. Occasionally, we'll be talking to constituents who have, you know, are regular users of the library, fans of the library. And if someone is interested in becoming involved and being part of, you know, a committee for the fundraising effort, just send them to you, or what would be, what would you order to the library board?
Well, we've been gathering names of people who'd be interested in helping out.
Okay.
And the first step for the planning committee is just a small group of people. And we wanted to get people who know a lot of people, to kind, keep the group smaller to make it more manageable, and everybody can work around, they get a big rabble, well, not a rabble. And then as we move forward, we're hoping to have different committees, subcommittees, people working on different projects. So different fundraisers, the 100 Extraordinary Women Group has been started up. And if anybody wants to contact me, I've had people talk to me, and I've taken down names, and I've just had a few suggestions today from somebody who came up to the desk. So we're always, we're always looking for people to get involved. I mean, and be part of it is building enthusiasm and excitement, and also just to get the word about, word out about the project.
So if someone wants to get involved, they can contact you directly or any, probably any library board member?
Send an email, come by. I'm always around.
Super, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions for Gerard this evening? Okay, well, disappointing about the grant, but thanks for continuing the efforts.
Yeah, and I've told people, it's, it's not really a setback or anything. It doesn't, we just have to, you know, we're still going forward. We just have to go a different way.
Yep. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 24-61. This is a conditional use permit for Cory and Cindy Stillman. Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City of Lake Mills City Council Resolution 24-61, Conditional Use Permit, Declarations and Findings, Grace Holdings for Grace Small Engine Repair, Cory and Cindy Stillman, Conditional Use Permit for Outdoor Sales and Display, 968 Mulberry Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel number 24607131242077.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 24-61, Conditional Use Permit for the Neighborhood Business District for permanent outdoor sales and display at 968 Mulberry Street.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quinno and a second by Mr. Fields. So can we get a staff summary of this, please?
Sorry. Good evening, council. So this, this conditional use was triggered to us by a resident that was pointed out that there was some outside sales and service being done in a B2 district. And so when I approached the owners, they, you know, they didn't know they needed that, and they responded quickly and got the process going. So back in August, late August, it was in front of the Plan Commission, and they did approve the conditional use with the request that they, we'd come, get together with them and come up with a little bit better site plan of how we were going to clean up that site, make it a little bit more organized, a little bit better accepted, I guess, by the residents right around there. And so I've been working with them, and that's kind of why it's been a little bit delayed, you know? I'm sure we were expecting to see that in September, but we've been going back and forth, and they were a little bit hesitant to spend a bunch of money, not knowing what the future holds, but they wanted to bring it into compliance now and utilize what they have. And I think that they, they've come up with a pretty good plan. The big things that we were after as a community was to clean it up and to, you know, designate sales and service areas. There was a big debate of what's sales and service and what's storage there. So I was over there a few times talking about, you know, things that are being stored, we can't have outside. They got to be inside, and the things that are being worked on and sell, being sold, obviously, they can fall into the sales and service area. And they got the dumpsters on the hard surface and got them screened in. And I think that the nice thing is, is they realize what they're up against, and we kind of figured out what they have available for them in the future as far as, in the, I call it the east side of the property. There's a big area there that's, that's screened in already by vegetation that they could put a hard surface in there, or they could put another building in there and start moving some stuff indoors instead of having everything outdoors. You know, they, they realized too, they don't want to have everything out there. They know snow is coming, they got to move things around and shovel and plow, and they are making the best of a situation right now, and they're just, they're, the good thing is they're, they're moving at such a fast pace, growing and expanding that they're still trying to work while they're getting this planned out too. But I think, I think what they've come up with here is a, is a good, I'll call it like a short-term fix for them until they, they grow out of this design.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just report from the Plan Commission. We had a discussion. There was a public hearing, and one neighbor, this property's on Mulberry Street, so it's kind of on it, you know, the business faces the main drag, but right around the corner is a residential neighborhood. And so we did have some public comment from one of the neighbors. And I think the Stillmans have, you know, really been sincerely wanting to work hard to try to address the neighbor's concerns, and as you said, their business is doing well, which is great for everyone. And, but it's growing faster than they can keep up with how they're managing their outdoor space. So at the Plan Commission, they seem to be, you know, sincerely wanting to kind of get things sorted out and organized a little bit better and be in compliance with our ordinance. And the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the permit.
Yeah, Mary?
I have a question. The only thing that caught my attention in the resolution is that there didn't, there wasn't any, like, reasonable timeframe by which conditions had to be met. And so I, it sounds like this is a little bit of chicken and the egg. He's waiting, he, waiting for, ensuring that we actually support the conditional use before the investment is made. But I could see a scenario by which the business continues to go on, and the conditions don't get met, but yet the business continues to go on. And so I'm curious if there's anything that we can have as a surety that this will be done in a reasonable timeframe, whatever reasonable would be. Is that a year? Is that six months in order for this? Because this is outstanding, the way it's written, and I am not comfortable with that, frankly.
Absolutely, and I think that is the whole reason for the conditional use is you guys get to put the conditions on. get to put the conditions on there. So you can say, hey, whatever on here that you would want to see, you know, if it's the parking and the dumpsters and, you know, the, the marked out areas for sales and service, you guys can put that condition on there. And then that would fall on me to, you know, make sure they're compliant in that timeframe.
Did you discuss a time, did you discuss a timeframe?
The plan commission did not know.
No. And I, and I didn't with them either, because really, there's not a whole lot on here that's, that's not done right now. You know, so if you look at this whole east section that I keep talking about, if you guys have that, their site plan in front of you, you know, there's, there's trees and there's landscaping already there. So that, that area would meet our ordinance for screening from residential area. And then out front, which I'll, towards Mulberry to the west there, you know, they just need to dedicate that area, whether they paint it off or if they put, you know, some sort of barriers in there for their sales and service. And really, they, they don't need to, there's no code that says they need to mark it off. What they, they did propose was to put the actual parking stalls in there, paint those parking stalls. I guess probably their biggest ticket item would be to get the dumpsters onto the, the hard surface, which is already there, and then get those screened in with some fencing. But there's not a whole lot that they needed to do other than fit what they have into this site plan. And I don't know if you guys have been by there, but they've already kind of got that area cleaned up, and it looks more like an outside sales business than, you know, it's organized.
And storage, yeah.
So to, to bring it into compliance, we're not, we're not far away at all to meet this site plan.
Okay.
Mary, would you want to propose an amendment to the resolution to give some kind of a timeframe, or try what would be realistic for them to complete the work?
I would say by the end of the year would be, you know, we're coming up on a busy season, but really to get a dumpster enclosure and to get some, some markings on a parking stall shouldn't take long at all. There's plenty of, plenty of good weather left to, to make that happen, I think.
I would be comfortable with making a proposal to modify the resolution to address a timeframe, whether, and I, and I don't know that by the end of the year is the best language, but within a period of six months, I want to be fair to the business owner to make sure that they have adequate notification to get it done. It sounds like this read to me like they had a lot of changes yet to make. And so knowing that they're pretty close, I just think it would be in our best interest to ensure that we give them within six months to have the outstanding conditions. Let's see how it's worded here. The conditional use will not be authorized until the applicant meets and complies with all applicable requirements that will be completed within a six-month timeframe for the conditional use to be done in place.
Dan, would a date, would a date certain be even more clear?
Six months is fine. It's going to be dated. I mean, if you want to pick a date certain, it makes no difference to me.
I want it to be a reasonable timeframe. No, I'm choosing six months. I knew you said year-end, but I, I want to make sure that in all fairness to this business owner, they have, they have a chance to remedy and complete. So, but I feel like having a timeframe is in our best interest.
So you're talking about adding to number two within six months of approval of the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
So I think that's a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend number two on the top of page two of the resolution. It would be what to add a phrase within six months of the date of the permit issuance?
Of approval of this motion, of this resolution.
Okay.
So Ms. Schmaker has made a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second from Ms. Quednow. Is there any discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the motion to amend Resolution 24-61?
Ms. Schmaker?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, any further discussion or questions or amendments to Resolution 24-61? No? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-61 as amended?
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmaker?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 24-67, which is a request for waiver of community center rental fees by Fly Homeschool Community. Misty, would you read that resolution title for us?
City Council Resolution 24-67, authorizing the waiver of fees associated with the use of the community center or conference rooms by Fly Homeschool Community.
Thank you. So on this one, rather than going right to a motion, I think what would maybe make the most sense is to have staff just describe the, you know, give the background on the policy and, and why this is before us. And then we can have the applicant, Nikki Engler, come up and, and give us her remarks, and then we can go from there.
Sure. So the community center policy is included in your packet. This was approved, I believe, late last year and implemented, I believe, early this year, February, if I recall correctly. The policy that was implemented changed user status, I guess I'll say, of who pays fees and what fees they pay when using the community center. So you have the priority group, which is government users, city of Lake Mills, and then other government users. And then you have a category, which is called sanctioned user. There are, the sanctioned user application comes to the city manager for approval. There are no defined criteria for what a sanctioned user might be. It just says to consider all relevant factors. I believe since it's been implemented, I have only denied one sanctioned user application, and that was for a for-profit entity that was looking to charge the users that were coming into the community room for their services. And so it was a, it would have, it's essentially, that did not seem within the spirit of the community center policy. But I don't believe I've denied any other applications. The fees for, to be a sanctioned user is a $200 fee that's paid once every two years. And that gives you one free use of the space per month of, of the, the period in which you are a sanctioned user. Additional uses during the month, then there's a, a fee for use for those. And this is during the, during the business hours, working, business hours of, of city hall. If it's after hours, then there's some other factors that come into play for it. The policy grants the city manager the authority to grant sanctioned user status. But in, in this case, when there's a request for a waiver of fees, there is no function for administration to waive fees. Any deviation from the policy has to be approved by the city council. So that is why it is before you tonight. If there's any questions regarding the policy?
I have a question. You had mentioned that there were additional use fees. What were the fees?
Uh, there's a $50 refundable deposit, and I, let me pull up. I had, I had this written down for me. I believe it's $100 for each additional use. Yes, $100 for a booking Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. for an additional booking. A weeknight or weekend booking is $300, and that carries a $150 refundable security deposit. And then there's a Saturday or Sunday open fee for when we have to send a staff member on a weekend to open the building if an event has been reserved for that day.
Right. And then, sorry, I was looking, I was trying to find it, and I wouldn't have asked the question if I couldn't find it. The fees that are associated with that, is that for all applicants, or is that specifically for sanctioned user additional time?
Paid users have to pay regardless of, they don't get any free uses. Government users and city of Lake Mills do not pay fees to use the room.
What I'm asking is, is the additional fee, like, is it universal, no matter who it is?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's, we have the policy, as you said, attached to our, attached to our agenda, and the rental application form is near the end, the last few pages, and that has the fees listed. So there are some variations for the hours of the day and city resident versus non-city resident. So there's some variation that way.
I must not have scrolled enough. I did not scroll enough.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's a lot of appendices in the back.
The appendix, yes. So apologies for my question.
And Drake, have a follow-up. I was talking to Madison earlier today, because I think she does the day-to-day implementation for this policy. I believe she said there's approximately eight sanctioned users right now. Does that sound about right? Okay.
Yes.
So there are eight groups that would be able to use it for free once a month? Or are using it for free once a month?
Correct. In addition to any government entities that use the building for free on a regular basis.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Okay, so we have an application for a fee waiver. And so Nikki Engler, you want to come up and tell us more about your proposed waiver?
Yes, hi.
Hi, thanks.
So we were in front of you just a few years ago. Michelle, you were here. And we had had to apply to be a sanctioned user then, and that was with the old policy. And we were approved for that. And it was a wonderful opportunity for our group to be able to come and meet pretty regularly, and it worked out really well for us, and we were all very grateful for that. Since the new policy was implemented, we then tried to pivot to find other places that were no cost for our group because it's just helpful for our people that come together as families to, or families that come together as a community to be able to not have another hindrance of a cost to meet together. But we have decided as a group that we want to come back to our community and have regular meetings in Lake Mills because that was very beneficial for us. So we decided to come back again and request the approval for the waiver of fees so that we can have our home base be back in our zip code. So that is the foundation of our request.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Engler? Michelle?
Nikki, did, did you inquire with the library about using the, the room that's above the library? And if so, was that difficult to, like, is that not ideal situation for what you're planning? Is it not big enough? I'm just curious.
Sure. So Gerard has been very good about responding to all my questions about things. He has offered us one time per meeting, one time per month in their space at no cost. And it is in their upstairs location, which however, during the day, when they have regular users and when they're open, is when we generally meet. And that is unsuitable for a library that likes to have quiet. It's upstairs, and there's not a whole lot of sound protection from anybody moving in the upstairs.
Not to play.
So, so, or to move around. I don't know if you've ever been in the main level when there's people upstairs, but a lot of it is heard.
Okay.
So it would be great if we were simply sitting and didn't actually do much, you know. So it is an option. It's a good backup. However, it is really great to be able to have the facility that is downstairs as accessible to us as possible.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah.
Any other questions?
May I just add some more information?
Sure.
In doing some, looking up things from the city, currently, there's one, two, three, four, five. We are the sixth group that is listed as a sanctioned user for the city of Lake Mills, just to correct that information. And also, the request for waiver of fees has been approved by the city council since this policy has been in place. That happened in August of 2023, I believe it was. And it was for a group that isn't actually listed as a sanctioned user. They're also not a city of Lake Mills government entity, and they are also not listed as a quasi-government entity under the, our, our section, subsection two in the policy either. So it was a group that was simply granted by the city council a waiver of fees. So our request is not an unusual thing, just wanting to put that out there. But we do appreciate your consideration and your service to our community as well.
Thank you.
Nikki, what, what group was that? You said it was from August 2023?
I think it was August. I might have the month wrong, but it was in '23, and it is the Lake Mills.
Yeah, I have that. It's the Lake Mills, the Lake Mills Senior Bingo.
I found it. It's the second meeting in August.
Yes, thank you.
Lake Mills Senior Bingo, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, and that was a city council Resolution 23-56, and we did a waiver of fees for up to once a week to allow a continuation of the Lake Mills Senior Bingo that had been there.
Yep.
Past practice, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was August.
So we're looking to just basically do something similar as what they've already done as well. We did pay our sanctioned user fee already and had gotten that approved.
I have one question, just to make sure that we're clear on the record. So in your application materials, you're asking for a waiver of fees so that you can meet twice a month rather than once a month. Is that correct?
I noticed that that is what is on the prepared resolution. That is currently how we meet, is twice a month. It would be my request, though, in front of you today, that if you could amend that possibly. I don't know what the proper ways to do all that is. But if it could be more open, if we did meet, then we would have like a holiday covered. For example, if we had a holiday gathering that met in addition to our regular twice-a-month meetings that we already do. So if we could have a little bit more leeway when those things come up. So I don't know how you would word that. That is my request. I know the bingo group meets weekly all, very consistently. We meet biweekly very consistently with additional things that get tossed in, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'm glad you clarified that. So the resolution that we have that was prepared says for up to two monthly meetings during business hours of the municipal buildings. So if the council was inclined to approve more than that, we would need to amend that. But the resolution that we, the written resolution that we have reflects your, your written application, so that would be the two times a month.
Yep. And I didn't even realize that that resolution was on there until the agenda was approved. So I apologize for not having that information on there.
That's fine. Again, we just want to make sure we're being clear about what you're requesting and so that then we can discuss it and.
Ms. Curler, if I may?
Yes.
That, just so you know, it was drafted based on the application, which dictated that you meet the first and third Monday of the month.
Right. And that is our normal, regular, yeah. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Engler? Okay. Does council have any discussion or comments between council members?
I, I just have a comment. I was not a part of the city council when, appeared a lot of work transpired to change this particular policy. And we had a situation when I first joined a few, several months ago, that I have a, I, I struggle with waiving fees. We put policies and fee structures in place for a reason, and a lot of it is to cover our own costs and to be fair and equitable and balanced. And I'm not sure, understanding that the, there was a waiver already in place. But I'm, I'm concerned if we put a policy in place just over a year ago and we start waiving, whether we need to continue to look at the policy if it's just not right. If we continue to find that the, the needs aren't, the costs and the needs aren't aligned together. And so I don't know how, because I still feel like the policy, the, the new policy as, as it was approved in August of '23 looked clear, solid, and not expensive and unaligned with what groups could possibly afford to utilize the space to cover our costs. And so it's just a comment regarding trying to understand the policy, because it changed quite a bit from, I mean, there was quite a revision from the former structure to the new structure. So it's just, it's a comment, and it's just a concern I have, just regarding this policy and, and waiving of fees again.
Thank you. I have a few thoughts about this. Was there anything from Michelle or Steve?
Go ahead, Steve, if you've got some.
I think this one is somewhat consistent with what we've done in the past. We talked about it, being that this is on schooling. I know the school system has used different meeting stuff too. They're part of the government entity. We don't pay. I think that there's only two or three. only two or three situations where we do waive fees or have had cons, had some consistency doing that. So, um, this one I'm in favor of, just because we've done it in the past, and it's been a good group, and I think it's beneficial.
Okay. Thanks. Michelle, did you have some comments?
I'm gonna follow up with what Steve's saying. Um, I think that we have done this before. It would be inconsistent if we were to say, whoop, nope, never mind. We, we did it once, but nope, we can't do it now because we, things have changed. Um, knowing homeschool, um, the way that that's set up, it is, it is not a, um, it's not an easy thing to find those places to, to gather. Um, and it's super important socially, emotionally for that to happen. Um, I believe that this community would, would agree to be, um, supportive of, of this, the use of the community center for this particular purpose, um, just like it would be supportive for the community center being used for Senior Bingo. So it's, it's hitting both ends of the age spectrum there.
Thanks. Um, I have a different perspective, I guess. Um, we did just revise this policy about a year ago, an extensive overhaul. And one of the things, um, Catherine Bishop was the lead on it, and I, I know she spent many, many hours with, uh, Misty and others to, you know, look at many aspects of it. Um, and I think what, one of the things that we really tried to accomplish, and I feel that we were successful in, is opening it up so that it was available to really pretty much any group to be a sanctioned user, um, and to get the benefits of having once a month for free. And that could be for a couple hours for bingo. It could be for, you know, six to eight hours for the homeschool group. It could be, you know, any number of hours. But a sanctioned user that pays $200 for two years is basically $8 per use. So that, to me, is not, i- is very reasonable, um, for that once a month. And my concern would be that, um, I want to make sure that we're, our facilities are open and available to all the different groups in our community, um, that are doing good things and that are doing good work. And if it starts to get booked up, um, then it will be less avail, you know, by the groups that are already here, then it will be less available for other groups. Um, I guess I also feel like if we are going to allow a fee waiver for one group, um, to be twice a month or, or possibly even more, then why wouldn't all the other sanctioned users come forward and ask for, you know, more than once a month? And then we're starting to not be able to cover our costs. So I don't find it, um, um, I, I, I feel like this is, um, a relatively new policy. I think we made a lot of improvements so that it would not be discretionary, so that it would be open and fair and inexpensive to everyone. And I think that once a month being free is a good balance. And beyond that, then I think we should be, um, recouping a little bit more of our costs. So I, I'm not in, in, um, favor of waiving this fee as proposed tonight.
Can I ask, uh, Mr. Daley, what is our, um, how much do we gain from these particular fees per year?
I wouldn't know off the top of my head. Thousands.
Okay.
But not, I mean, hundreds to thou, hundreds, maybe thousands.
Okay.
Um, you're not collecting $30,000 a year in, uh, community center rental fees.
Right. So it's kind of a drop in the bucket, in a way that it's not a whole lot of money that we would be gaining or losing in this case.
I guess that would be up to each one of you to decide how relevant the, the amount of revenue is. Um, it is not a, it's not a make or break of the budget type of revenue. If it all disappeared, city operations would function as normal, I guess is what I would say. Um, the room has certain costs associated with it. The floor needs to be re-waxed, might, basically annually because of the, the wear and tear that goes on it. Um, it has, um, electrical systems and, uh, other mechanical features that, that get serviced, um, cleaning it. There is different, um, times where additional cleaning may be, may be necessary and which deposits don't always cover. So it depends on, you know, how, you know, the state of the room after an event, what, you know, what our costs are associated with, with the, with the building. But, uh, as far as a revenue source, it is not a significant revenue source, uh, for the city's budget. No.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a prepared resolution, um, 24-67, uh, but we don't have a motion on the record yet. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 24-67, authorizing the waiver of fees associated with the use of the community center or conference rooms by fly homeschool community.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Kedna and a second by Mr. Fields. Any just further discussion? Okay, Singna, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-67?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
No.
Ms. Schmager?
No.
Ms. Kedna?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay, so that's a two-two vote, which is, um, failed. Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, thank you for your attention. We've listened to everything you've said, and the council has deliberated, and now we've made our, made our decision. So now we'll be moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is Ordinance 1270, the 2025 General Fund Budget. Um, and Misty, we have our second reading tonight, so would you please do our second reading?
Ordinance 1270, 2025 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
Okay, this is our second reading tonight. Um, so we won't be voting on this tonight, and we do have a budget session scheduled, work session scheduled, to kind of go through this in detail, right? And to, uh, see if the council has any changes or recommendations, make sure we understand all the details. So, uh, Drake, can you just remind us when that budget work session is scheduled for?
A week from tonight at 5:00 PM.
Okay, so Tuesday, October 22nd, 5:00 PM, and that'll be here in the chambers?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a public meeting. Anyone is welcome to attend, but, um, it'll just be for the, uh, staff to answer questions from the council about the proposed budget. Okay, um, so our next agenda item is Ordinance 1271, which is the 2025 Capital Budget. And this is the second reading tonight. So Misty, would you do that second reading, please?
Ordinance 1271, 2025 Capital Budget.
It's a quick title. Okay, again, this is our second reading tonight, and I'm sure we'll be talking about that also at our budget work session, going through, uh, any questions that the council may have, uh, next week, Tuesday. So then, uh, these last two items we will be voting on, um, on November 5th at our next meeting, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. All right.
You'll have, I guess you'll have the ability to vote.
We'll have the ability to vote on them. They'll be, we'll have our third reading.
Correct.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so moving on to Letter F, that is Ordinance 1272. Uh, this is amending City Code Chapter 505. This is a first reading. Uh, so Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Ordinance 1272, Amending City Code Chapter 505, Peace and Good Order and Creating Section 505-9 Sexting by Minors Prohibited.
Thank you. So this is a new proposal, first reading. Um, so I see Chief Schroder here. You're gonna tell us all about this.
Sure. Good evening. Um, this recommended ordinance was brought to my attention by Officer Johnson, who's our School Resource Officer, um, several months ago. And her concern is she's seen more and more, particularly in the schools, but we see it outside of the schools as well, um, of this activity of sexting or sending nude pictures among minors from student to student. Um, so I did some research on it and tried to find what communities have done to address the issue. What's the current status of the laws regarding it? What do we have in place? And what are our enforcement options? Um, so as it sits now, our enforcement options are really just written in state statute, which would make it either a misdemeanor or felony, depending on what statute we applied, um, that we would have to do a juvenile referral and send it over to, um, Human Services to be processed through the DA's office and the courts, uh, if we wanted to take any sort of enforcement action for these violations. Um, some of them we do deal with through counseling or warnings, um, but we really don't have a middle enforcement option that isn't as severe as a juvenile referral, um, which can have significant consequences on a juvenile. Um, so I looked around, and I found that many communities have passed an ordinance similar to what's in front of tonight. Um, and that is a sexting ordinance that really, in its basic form, prohibits, uh, minors from sending nude photos or nudity to another minor. It, it only applies to minors, both sending and receiving. Um, it doesn't allow them to possess it. It doesn't allow them to show it to another minor. Um, and it really kind of prohibits that activity that we want to prevent of, of having these types of images and things passed from minor to minor. Um, so I'm happy to answer questions you have. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it. Otherwise, I can get into any specifics or answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Um, it's just the first reading tonight, so...
...the showing of intimate body parts, which are defined as female breasts or genitalia, men and women genitalia. Um, and I, I think when it shows that in, in aroused circumstance, it is certainly sexually explicit. If it is shown to, um, um, to appeal to the purient interest, it is defined as sexually explicit. You're in gray area there. Um, it is not protected First Amendment speech, for instance, because it is deemed as obscenity. So, um, sexually explicit is defined in, in a number of places within Wisconsin statute, and we have explicit despite purveying nudity of minors. So there are very limited exceptions in, in regard to this ordinance. Um, that's probably something that will expand and contract a little bit in the law through time as stuff is challenged. Um, I don't want to bring up any specific cases that I'm aware of, but, um, it, there is, there is discussion on this gray area. What I do, uh, agree explicitly with, with Chief on is there really is no means to, um, regulate this activity that we know is happening outside of felony or discretion. Walk away. Um, this is trying to bridge that gap a little bit. And, and frankly, it, it's a difficult spot. Um, there are state statutes that define...
Like, well, they're a victim, and maybe they're, for any number of reasons, not comfortable telling someone, but, um, you know, they've received something offensive. I guess I'm just wondering how that is going to be, um...
Well, and I think...
...implemented or enforced.
Sure. And I think enforcement of the ordinance is a key, because you have to write it so it is enforceable. But then there's also discretion in how it's enforced. And I don't want to just say, well, we're gonna exercise discretion. But, um, for example, if two minors share pictures with each other and don't tell anybody about it, we're never gonna know about it, and then it's not going to be enforced.
Right, right.
Um, if, for example, it's specific to your question, if, um, you know, there's a report that a minor had shared, um, an image or a video or something that falls in the, under the definition of this ordinance with several students.
Difficult, because, um, I'm a free speech guy. I, I don't know that, um, regulating every aspect of our life is, is a good thing. However, it has been, um, iterated, reiterated to me that there's a need here, that this is an activity that has, uh, blown up in our school system specifically. Um, and they, uh, they're, they're looking for solutions that just aren't so punitive. I think this can be further defined. This can be amended through time. The statute certainly will change on this activity as, um, you know, new technology pops up, as new experiences come about. That's, that's the nature of the law. Um, I, I struggled with the portion that you're talking about as well, because it does conflict with the state statute. Mere possession can be deemed, may be deemed as a felony, um, without any more. Is that crime being prosecuted at this point in time? A 14-year-old that happens to have a, a picture of a nude 13-year-old on his or her, her phone? No, that's not. But the subsequent trans, transmission of that image certainly is. The receipt and the maintenance of it isn't until there's a search warrant that's conducted on their, their media, on their phone or whatever, and they find that they're not just storing one picture, they're storing hundreds of pictures. So it, it's a question of scale. It's a question of, um, appropriateness with regard to, um, the, the punitive nature of the statutes. There's a number of considerations here. Um, what you have in front of you is an ordinance that's generally, um, kind of standardized with regard to the region right now. This is consistent with, um, what other municipalities are doing on this issue. And it's, it's really a start, because it's a contemporary issue. So, um, I absolutely recognize the key point that you brought up. Um, I don't think it's, um, while there is an ambiguity there, and while there is a, a difference in statute, I don't think it, it necessarily, like, um, makes this ordinance unworkable or opens it up too much. It was attempted to restrict. So, um, I, I, I understand your concern and, and would be happy to discuss, you know, amendments or solutions that you may think are, are more appropriate.
And if I may, I would add is, I think there is, um, a deterrent effect in having language in there to prevent people from keeping these images and not reporting them. Um, because even though they may not have intent to share it at the, at the moment, as long as they have the image, there's a possibility that they may. So, um, I like the option of having the language available in the ordinance.
Thank you. Mary, did you have a comment? Anyone else have a question or comment? Um, I think it's still be good to have a couple of meetings to, you know, kind of think it through and think through the implications. But I really want to, uh, compliment Officer Ja, Johnson for, you know, identifying this issue and, and bringing it, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. Um, I guess one last question for tonight is, um, where would the school district be on that? And has she been, you know, talking with administrators there about this recommendation?
I don't know that there's been a direct discussion with the school district, and mainly, unlike the vaping ordinance that we passed, it's not specific to a school environment. Um, so although...
Okay.
...much of it happens at school. There's many instances where it's between students, but it happens when they're away from school. So, uh, we did not consult the school because it's not specific to that environment.
Thank you. That's a good, good clarification.
However, they're definitely aware of the issue. And I, I think they're generally supportive of, um, avenues to address this issue that are outside of felony.
Okay.
I can tell you as a high school teacher, and I've taught in middle school, too, that this type of, um, this type of action is going to be a good message for teenagers to understand that even just having something on their phone is, uh, not good at all. Like, I'm, I've, I've had better words with them. I'm lacking them right now. But it is important that they understand and are taught in that moment, and then continue to be taught. It's just, this is really helpful to them with, not within just the school environment, but outside, because like Officer Schwer, Schroder said, it's very much happening, unfortunately. And it's happening, and it's spreading like wildfire, fire, and it's unfortunate because what happens is it becomes, um, bullying. And oftentimes, those videos and photos are shared with people who have no business seeing them, and then it becomes a reputation killer. So for the mental health of teenagers, this is vital.
Thank you for that perspective, Michelle. I really appreciate that. All right. Thank you, Chief. Um, any other questions for staff on this ordinance this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was our first reading of Ordinance 1272, so we'll carry that forward to our next meeting. So that concludes council business for this evening, other than a closed session, which we'll do in a moment. Um, recommendations for future agendas. We have our October 22nd budget work session. Uh, we have several items carried forward for our November 5th meeting, um, that we've talked about tonight. Anything else, um, from staff that we can be expecting?
October 24th, our open, our session.
Oh, yes, our listening session on October 24th. Um, do we have our, uh, Dan, do we have our, uh, performance review with Drake? Is that date finalized? I think we were talking about October 28th.
I think it's the 28th.
Monday, October...
That's what we have.
Okay, Monday, October 28th, so that's a special meeting that will only essentially be a closed session.
Uh, we, unless there's other business. We did toss that out today. Just because you are getting together, if there's other business.
I just absolutely can't wait until November 5th.
Um, tentatively, we, we've scheduled that meeting for 6:00 PM. I, I believe that works for everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
October 28th, that's 6:00 p.m. And then we have October 22nd at 5:00 p.m.
Steve, Steve Fields, was that 6:00 p.m. was okay with you?
Yeah, 6:00 p.m. should work.
Very good.
28th.
On the 28th.
That's the performance review. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
I'm still trying to find a date to be available in the community room for the, for people to ask questions of the building referendum. There's not a lot of them available.
We keep scheduling other things, yeah.
Now that all these other meetings are set, I'll try and find one remaining, and we'll put it out on social media that it'll be available. And it'll, it simply will, it'll just be informative. As I've stated previously, there will not be any attempt to sway anyone to vote one way or the other. It will only be the information that we have, how we, the process that led to us getting here, and what a yes or no vote would entail, and if the project moved forward, moved forward, you know, here's the financing and preliminary plans and preliminary timeline.
Great. And I just wanted to remind our audience that we do have information up about the advisory referendum, so there isn't a referendum question about the Sandy Beach restaurant that will be on the November 5th ballot for City of Lake Mills voters. And if you go to the city website, on the bottom right, there's a link to Sandy Beach, and that will take you to a page of information, including a really good two-page fact, you know, frequently asked questions. That's a very good summary that hopefully will address people's questions. And then certainly, you can talk to staff or council members if you have another question about it. So we would really like our community's input on that question. So I encourage you to look into it and to vote, please. Okay, so our next agenda item is, number 11, is to convene into closed session. So I'll read the statement. We're convening into closed session to discuss claims against the city pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1985 sub 1, sub G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved, and to discuss city manager employment evaluation pursuant to section 19.85 sub 1, sub C, Wisconsin statutes, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. So I need a motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into closed session.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quednow, seconded by Ms. Schmager. All in favor, say aye.
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 So that's a 4-0. So when we're finished with our closed session, we'll be reconvening, but that won't be televised. And then we'll be adjourning. So this is the end of our televised portion for this evening. Thank you.